So, we are now going to go on to the delegations regarding the home stability benefit. I think that was moved by, in the, in the, so that list, uh...
Because I did, uh, send a number of emails to Joanne Prill this morning. I understand there is no report, uh, forthcoming today on this, on this file. Um, and so the question becomes, uh, a two-part. The delegation's coming in to deal with it, probably obviously acute issue. Um, but there's a longer-term sustainability issue. Uh, I would suspect that, uh, there would reserve opportunity for delegations to come when that report comes forward as well.
Yeah, they always have the right to come back and report. I'm also, um, happy to report that Council Marula and his work has been, will be putting forward a motion that's been circulated. And I think that some of the members of the public who have gathered here today would like the opportunity to speak to that motion and to their experiences and to this particular issue. So we'll give them that. And then, uh, moving forward, if it's at a future council date or at a future community emergency services talking about sustainability, we'll all obviously invite them back to speak again. Um, but I appreciate that point. So with that, we have, uh, is that item 4.1? We have Brendan Jawett from the Hamilton Community Legal Clinic respecting the HSB benefit. I thought they were approved when we bumped them up. But I could do that again just for the sake. Moved by Councilor, um, Marula, seconded by Councilor Whitehead, all those in favor, carried. Excellent. Thank you so much, Brendan. Uh, we do have a five-minute cap because there's going to be a, a series of delegates. I'll let you know kindly, uh, when you're, when you need to start to wrap it up.
Well, I'm a lawyer, so I have no problem being brief. Um, I'm a staff lawyer at the Hamilton Community Legal Clinic. I, I do, uh, primarily landlord and tenant law. Uh, and I, as a result of my position, am very aware of the impact that the, uh, that the housing stability benefit issue has on members of our community. Uh, I work as duty counsel occasionally at the landlord and tenant board, which is, I can actually see the building, uh, right here across the street. And as duty counsel, I see a significant, significant volume of people coming through the landlord and tenant board, uh, facing rent arrear, uh, rent arrear issues. Uh, so their landlord has brought them to the board and they owe a certain amount of money. And one of the things that the board will think about is what is the prospect of a person, uh, being able to pay back the rent that they, that they owe? And on innumerable occasions, I will inform landlord and tenant board members about the housing stability benefit and the fact that somebody has $800 to $1,500, depending on their family size, uh, available to them to help pay off those arrears. And again, on innumerable occasions, I have seen the landlord and tenant board delay eviction on the condition that the person can get the rent paid back, uh, in time with the assistance of the housing stability benefit. It is a tangible, observable, uh, benefit that keeps people housed and prevents evictions. It's a necessary, uh, it's a necessary fund. Um, I'm, I'm actually, and, and I'm, I'm not even going to speak that much because I'm not the person that you need to hear from. I'm going to tell one story, uh, of a woman who, uh, is, is an ODSP recipient. And, uh, as you know, there can sometimes be, uh, fairly onerous reporting requirements for people who are receiving, uh, Ontario disability support benefit. So this, uh, woman had some reporting difficulties and, uh, and her benefits were suspended. And this was, and we're talking about last week. She, uh, you know, because of her time of need, she needed assistance with her rent arrears. And so she went to the Housing Help Centre where the Housing Stability Fund is administered. She went to the Housing Help Centre and they said, "Well, you're not really on ODSP because your benefits are suspended right now." Uh, and as a result of the cuts that were recently made and the, the eligibility cuts, uh, that were made last week, this woman was denied this assistance that she needed, uh, in, you know, in, in one of her, um, one of her weakest hours. And it's this kind of, uh, this kind of situation that we are going to see for the hundreds of people who rely on the housing stability benefit, who don't receive Ontario Works and don't receive ODSP. People who are, uh, old age pensioners, people who, uh, receive employment insurance benefits, people who, um, are, 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 are receiving it in eleven, just over $11 minimum wage. Many residents of our city who desperately need this, uh, access to this fund and, and, and it keeps them housed. It keeps them out of the shelter system, keeps them out of hospitals. Uh, and so, uh, we, we certainly support Councilor Marula's motion. It's much needed and we appreciate your consideration in that.
Thank you so much. Please, if, if you could, just in case, sometimes there's questions. Are there any questions from the committee? No? Thank you very much. Moved to receive, moved by Council Far, seconded by Council Partridge, all those in favor, carried. We now have Dave Trukuski. Thank you so much for joining us today, Dave.
Thank you for having me, Chair. Um, I am here today, but I shouldn't be. Um, because, um, 15 years ago, I had a career at Nortel and that's gone. I had a house and it's gone. Um, 10 years ago, I was a student at Mohawk. I had my own apartment, um, and I had to give that up and I had to go on in social assistance. Um, and I, Brendan, thank you for your example because that's a perfect example of, um, why we need to keep this benefit. Um, I'm actually here today speaking for the Hamilton Roundtable for Poverty Reduction. Uh, we met on Friday and had a brief talk about this issue. Um, it's not just enough to give benefits for people on Ontario Works, on Ontario Disability. Um, that's the bottom. But there are people, you know, those of us on the system don't want to be there. I'll tell you what, I had to go on 10 years ago. Um, I had to go, I had to give up my apartment and go to a second level lodging house just around the corner. Um, I wouldn't be here today if there wasn't the community startup maintenance benefits, which was the previous benefit that the province axed. That was an open benefit that was funded as needed. And four years ago, the province tightened their belt and they pulled the funding and they capped it. And four years ago, we filled the council chambers from communities around the province. Communities united to say, "No, we need the community startup and maintenance benefit." And we were able to get one year of transitional funding. Um, Hamilton Council stepped up to create the housing stability benefit for those not just on Ontario Works, Ontario Disability, but all low-income people. Because if you don't have that for all low-income people, then you create the poverty trap. I'm still in the poverty trap because there are other benefits that aren't there for low-income people. There aren't health benefits. But I'll tell you what, I'm here today because there is, I was able to find stable housing. I was able to secure that through that benefit. I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for that. Um, we're not progressing. We're here because the province, right, is looking to build infrastructure. They want to build rapid transit. They want to build an LRT here in Hamilton. To do that, they're selling a public asset, um, Hydro. Ontario Hydro and they're selling it. All right, and for that, to build the LRT. But now what's happening? Hydro bills. I'll tell you what, in the last year, I've heard not just low-income people complain about hydro bills. I've heard everybody complain about hydro bills. The fact is the other people have disposable income. For those of us on low income, we don't have it. We've already sacrificed. What now, what do we have to give up? We've already given up all the benefits, like maybe a phone. I know a lot of people, they don't have a phone and it's hard to contact them. Or they don't have enough food. So now we have to give up our shelter. Now we have to give up our heat. How much more? Because we want to build an LRT. I'll tell you what, if you're building the LRT off of that, then tell the province. I'll tell you what, you've got a bill for this, pass it up to the province. Because they created this problem. They cut the community startup and maintenance benefit. They refuse to increase rates. Every year, they give a 1% increase, which is sub-inflationary. So we're not moving ahead, we're not even treading water. We're slowly sinking and the water's rising and rising and rising. So, um, Council Marula, thank you for your motion. Um, I look forward to a sermon on your downloading situation. Um, I'll come back in two months. So I'll tell you what, I'll be back in two months.
Dave, I know you're, you're, you're a regular here. I know you understand the nuances. Um, just for the, for the purpose of, could you mind just pushing that screen down? I just want to be able to...
Let's see it.
It'll keep, it'll keep going down, all the way down.
Yeah, all the way down?
That's perfect. I have a, some questions, some very candid questions for you. But I will, as the Chair, allow members of councils of this committee to ask the questions first and then I'll come back.
Fair enough.
We have Counselor, uh, Skelly.
Yeah. Thank you, David. Thank you for your, your, your presentation. Uh, you're clearly a very, through the Chair, you're clearly a very bright man, articulate. And you said you've had to be here once before asking for help to get out of an ugly situation. How do we prevent you from coming back? What is it going to, what do we as a society have to do? What can we do to ensure that you don't have to keep coming back here and asking for help?
There are many systemic issues. The Roundtable has, has been around for 10 years now. Um, and they've talked about the systemic issues. Uh, they make recommendations. The problem is the recommendations cannot be followed through because of lack of money. And, and like I said, we're not talking here about moving the bar up to prevent people from falling down. We're just here as a stopgap measure to actually make sure more people don't fall faster. All right? Um, so there, there are serious systemic issues. All right, like we are on the brink of a affordable housing crisis here in Hamilton. All right, this benefit, you cut this benefit, you heard the numbers. Okay? Because if people, if people lose their housing, all right, rent controls only apply to people that are there. Once you're out, you have to go out. The landlord can come in and raise the rent to whatever. Okay, there's two buildings just by Cannon and Barton there. The landlord was giving people thousands of dollars to move out so that they could jack the rent 50%. The rents in this community have gone crazy in the last two years. So if someone's evicted, pardon my language, they're screwed. Because there's no affordable housing out there. People, people used to come to Hamilton not because we have great social services, which we do. The fact is, if you're on disability, you have $1,000. If you're on OW, you only have 600. That's not a gravy train. If you're in Toronto, right? If you have $1,000, you may be able to live in Toronto. If you have 600, you don't. And you come to Hamilton. Now, people can't live in Hamilton and they're going elsewhere. That's what's happening.
Thank you, Dave. My, my next question is, you mentioned Hydro and certainly you're not the first person to address that at this council anywhere across the province. You, and you've just, uh, referred to the soaring, uh, cost or, or rent increases. Is Hydro, however, the one issue that you're finding is really, um, a game changer today? Or is it perhaps, is it, is it rent increases?
Um, it's both. Because I, from the 10 years ago, or about 10 years ago, when I took the benefit, it was capped at 800. What is it today? It's 800. That's a cap. It hasn't increased. All right, what's increased is the costs. 10 years ago, I had a, a one-bedroom apartment that was $600. All right, there's a new building down this, just up the street here, that they're going for more than $1,000. $400 over 600 is, uh, 70% increase over 10 years. And that's not the Hydro. The Hydro, I, I know, I actually, my, my stable Hydro, my landlords come to me, pressured me all year to pick up the Hydro costs. All right, and I think it was $50 or $100 a year ago. It's been up 50% in one year, Hydro. Because our province needs money to build infrastructure and their asset recycling. And so they sold the majority share. And then they've got a green energy program where instead of paying eight or 10, 20 cents for, uh, a kilowatt hour, they're spending 80 cents, 80, 80 cents. All right, the Hydro prices are insane. Right, so I think we're here because the housing stability benefit doesn't just cover rent. It covers utilities. And because the utility cost has gone through the roof this year, um, all of a sudden, all these people are coming, right? Ask Joanne or her staff why, when they budgeted last year, like, they, they made the change three years ago. We weren't here last year defending it. It's the Hydro costs that are, that's pressure now. All right, but I, the rents are there too. Right?
Thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you.
Um, Dave, always a pleasure seeing you. I know you've been a strong, uh, activism community and...
We've had many good conversations.
And putting pressure on where you need to, hold our feet to the fire. So I really appreciate that. Um, and you're being a part of the Roundtable. Do we know, um, how many jurisdictions have this particular program in place?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I would say one. Because here in Hamilton, we realize it's not enough just to give the benefits to people on Ontario Works and people on Ontario Disability. We advocate to have low-income benefits. It doesn't matter whether you're on whatever. It's if you're in low income and you need it, you get it. All right, and, and we advocate even for health benefits. Right, where again, Ontario Works has that, Ontario Disability has that. But once you become working poor, chances are you don't. All right, if you transition, you may have it for six months. Actually, I had a one-year contract a couple of years ago. I think I had it for a year, I don't know how. Um, but if we're going to destroy the poverty trap, if we're going to have a poverty-free Hamilton, poverty-free Ontario, poverty-free Canada, poverty-free world, we have to destroy the poverty trap. All right? There are people in this world that benefit from having economic slaves. All right, they give a, a minimum wage that isn't livable. Social assistance rate, rates that aren't livable. So people will do whatever they can for a little bit of extra money to improve their lives a little bit. Right?
So, Dave, where I'm coming from is, is it's not the merit of the program? We understand, uh, there's a merit, there's a merit for food banks as well.
Food banks, food banks exist because the rates aren't there. Right?
For the same reason, is this particular program, it's because the province, uh, isn't providing adequate funding, um, for, uh, in fact, they have been cut up since the Harris days in regards to the impacts it's had on, uh, welfare. And I'm sure it impacts disability benefits as well. Uh, so the core problem is, is that, um, it hasn't kept up with the cost inflation. And therefore, the pressure is being borne by the people in poverty. Uh, and, and we're doing this patchwork. This program is a patchwork program. This, this, this program...
Tell me something I don't know.
Shouldn't be needed because if we had, uh, sustainable, uh, uh, funding for people on social services and people with disabilities, the province wouldn't be in a need for this, this particular program. What I'm trying to ascertain at this point is one, uh, my understanding, the province is, uh, funded to a certain degree. They claim, uh, that they fund it, uh, but the way they fund it is through chippy.
Chippy.
And they used to fund programs. And now they basically empower communities, uh...
To choose how, how they, how they delegate and distribute their funds.
This is a shell game.
Yeah.
So we have, uh, some very important programs, the most vulnerable in our community, including this particular program that's funded through that envelope. But the amount, uh, of, of, of the envelope doesn't come, uh, close to meeting the needs of all those, uh, needed programs. Then the province comes forward and says, "Hey, the city has the power and the authority. They can, uh, take money from a different pocket of chippy and put it towards this." But what they don't say is what the impacts of those other programs, we pull money from those other...
Yeah, well, government's really good at giving you with one hand and taking more with the other.
So, I...
All right, they, they did that four years ago. They, they gave it, you know, "Oh, here's more chippy money, but we're taking the C sum away." All right, they, they actually did that 10 years ago. All right, and, and it's cut, 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 and it's the death by a million cuts. All right?
The reason I wanted to highlight with you and highlight for the general public, the city's always finds themselves in an unfortunate position and the province says, "Well, you know, the city has that discretion." Really don't because, uh, the amount of money we have in that chippy funding is going to this program, as well as many other very important, uh, programs for people, uh, uh, in need in our community. And to steal from Peter to give to Paul means you're leaving somebody else without. So it's an untenable position for the city to be in, yet the province points the finger at the city for not adequately funding, uh, or having discretion of how the funding, uh, for this particular program, um, is meant. I guess I want to highlight the fact, yourself...
Through the Chair.
Through the Chair, sorry, through the Chair.
Forget the Chair.
With, with your responses, which are great, that, um, it is a provincial, uh, uh, challenge that they haven't met.
Yeah, but the city's in a difficult position as administer to administer provincial policy while not giving enough funds. Council Marula's, I've heard him go on and on about the whole downloading where 25% or more of the municipal budget is because of provincial policy mandates that aren't adequately funded. And that's why our municipal tax rates are the highest around the region. And, and I mean, you guys have done great for five years. I'm interested to see what happens in the budget going forward.
Not, not exactly the highest rate at the meeting. Just don't want any misinformation out there.
Yeah.
So, uh, I want to highlight those issues, Dave, because these are serious issues. Impact, uh, uh, food on the table and shelter and, you know, two most fundamental issues for people in poverty. And yet, uh, when I read, I pick up a paper and find Minister or assistant to the Minister pointing the finger at the city, uh, is culpable for the fact that it's not funded in the, in the, uh...
Political scapegoating.
...this particular program, I find that just insulting. And, uh, and I want to highlight that. The other, uh, I want to focus on was, um, this program, I understand, is not just rent arrears. It helps with many other areas.
Correct. Bedbugs, um, and like I said, utility arrears.
And utility, uh, new mattresses?
In the bedbugs.
Well, that's...
Or, or, yeah, e- even when, when people move out of, like, for instance, I was living in a residential care facility where I didn't have stuff and I moved in and I needed a new bed. And I could get money for that. Correct.
And is there, uh, you had indicated a program that was, that was transitional, that was at, uh, to get a new apartment? Uh, was it startup funds? Is the startup funds...
Well, before the housing stability benefit, which is the city's solution to the province cutting what used to be called the community startup and maintenance benefit. It was a provincial benefit that was funded as needed. So as people needed it, the province funded it. All right, you, you were there. All of a sudden, they came and said, "No, you've got a cap. You can only do, I forget, the $20 per benefit unit or whatever." Um, and so what used to be an open-ended pool of funds now became, became limited. And so the, the cities have to go in and cut. All right, most other ones didn't. Hamilton went, "Well, no, we understand the housing, this community startup maintenance benefit is critical. And so we will use our chippy funding to fund that." And then we created the housing stability benefit. Some of the rules changed. All right, like, um, you can only get it every 24 year, 24 months. All right, there was emergencies, that if there was an emergency and you were under that 24 months, you used to be able to, to get it. That went four years ago.
Okay, the, the, that, I, I guess what I'm trying to hi- highlight, uh, because everyone's talking about just rent arrears, but this particular, uh, uh, program, uh, stability program is a little more robust than that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because it does help to some degree, that startup piece. To some degree, it helps with the bedbugs or the new mattresses, uh, utility arrears. So there, there are a number of benefits out of this particular home stabilization, uh, program that's being impacted by the lack of funding.
Correct.
Thank you.
The, the, um, I think the motion has 13 whereses that pretty well describes the benefit and the, and the impacts of it. So, um, and it would be nice to actually have the whole thing read out and perhaps a standing recorded vote here and at council.
Well, we'll, we'll take care of that at the appropriate time. I appreciate you being here. Um, Counsel Johnson, if I could pass the, the Chair over. So Dave, $5.7 million for this funding. Um, and we've identified some of the pressures. So when that, when that money is up and it was, it was accessed, it was, it was a very popular program. Almost $1 million in mattresses with bedbug pressure. Uh, huge pressure I don't think we could have accounted for previous to, to rolling out this program. And now we're back here again. Uh, would you agree that though this council has been very supportive of advocating for adequate social assistance at the provincial level?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That this benefit exists here in Hamilton and probably nowhere else is an example of that. All right, what I'm, what I'm saying is that that was the one piece of progress we made to give that up?
Oh, I, I know that's...
Would, would be tragic.
That's not where I'm going with the line of question.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, but my question is, when, so our staff, you know, through you, Mr. Chair, when they have a mandate and at the end of the day, they have $5.7 million. So when that ends, staff then have to report back on the money being up. Right, so it's not like they've made a choice. It's not like you're redirecting money anywhere, that money is then up. My question to you is that, and, and looking at all the variables of this particular program, rent arrears, hydro arrears, uh, mattresses, so the bedbug thing, acknowledging that we've, you know, we've invested almost $1 million in mattresses, where would you put your highest priorities in terms of, of, um, of, of the program? Because these are the, these are the things that we have to face. And that's what, that's what I'm challenged by is that, at the end of the day, that's what we have to face is, how do you, acknowledging Council Marula's motion, make this work the best that it possibly can for our constituents in the most vulnerable situations?
There has been a new model in housing preventiveness called Housing First.
Yep.
All right, where it's been recognized that you can spend money to help people with various problems. But if they do not have a stable housing situation, the effectiveness of all the other benefits are, is questionable. Where if you have that housing, I'm the example, okay? I wouldn't be here today if I wasn't able to find stable housing a number of years ago to actually stop running around crazy between, um, that I have a stable house now. I don't have to worry where I'm going to sleep tonight, tomorrow, next week, next month, next year. Next year, I might have to worry about now because of the Hydro.
Thank you.
But it, so you have to get the housing first. Now, that being said, if not housing only, all the other benefits come in too, or where it just goes into, how can you get someone like me who wants to make an impact, give back to my community, and I could be paid for it? Why am I not there yet 10 years later?
I, I completely concur with you and I just, I wanted to put that out there because that, that is what we're facing with Council Marula's motion. That's what staff face when they have very real constraints. Because this is above and beyond what, what has been allocated. And, and I'm, I'm in my office, Dave, just so that we're clear, uh, dealing with the bedbug epidemic, which has seen improvements. It has seen improvements. I know Counselor Johnson is working on a landlord registry to begin to regulate that market...
The rental housing?
Of rental housing, which has been inadequate and substandard. And I, and, and what I've heard from you here today is that neoliberalism is failing us. Is that, you know, when you underfund people, when you legislate poverty through social assistance and ODSP, when you download onto municipalities knowing that they, they can't go back to the well, uh, it's failed. And then we've seen that with the privatization of Hydro. It's failed. So, so that's what we're here dealing with today. I, I just want to take a moment, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, to acknowledge, uh, your consistency and your passion and your attendance here, paying attention to the close details, to know that these complex issues, uh, also have within the community, uh, solutions. So Dave, I just wanted to acknowledge you for being here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I just take a moment, you mentioned the neoliberalism.
Sure.
There's a new book out called Beyond Banksters. And it's called Resisting the New Feudalism by Joyce Nelson. Just came out quite recently. It's accurate up to about September. And it talks about what's happening. It's talking about a new Canadian infrastructure bank that shouldn't, we shouldn't need to create because as Canada, we're not using our central bank. And this is where, when governments have to borrow billions and billions of dollars from private bankers, the federal governments borrowed $700 billion over several decades. They paid $1.1 trillion and we still have that deficit. Yet between '38 and '74, we created the St. Lawrence Seaway. We created the, um, Transcanal Highway with little debt.
I agree.
All right, we're paying private bankers instead of investing and privatizing things like Ontario Hydro are why we're here today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. I'll, I'll take the Chair back. Are there any other speakers on the list? May I please have a motion received? Moved by Counsel Far, seconded by Counsel Jackson, all those in favor, carried. We have Natasha Finley-Clearamont respecting HSB. Welcome, Natasha. Thank you so much. Um, appreciated your comments outside and look forward to your comments here today. If you can, just make sure the microphone is positioned so you don't have to yell, yell too loud.
I'd like to open the case of, uh, that I was presented from the Hamilton Community Legal Clinic. It's an eagle feather for us to embrace our own strengths that we have.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration today for the matter of the housing stability benefits. I'm only one story of many across the, across Hamilton. I am currently a full-time student in a diploma program at Mohawk College. I'm a single mother of two children, ages 13 and 8. I have a brother, sister-in-law, nieces, nephew, and a mother who depend on me. In April of 2016, I was pedestrian struck by a vehicle in the city of Hamilton. The driver didn't have any insurance. I have been unable to afford the services needed to obtain recovery. I hide it very well that I'm sore. It has had a tremendous impact on my capabilities of being able to be a full-time student, single parent, and obtain full-time employment within my city, which I once obtained highly. My income is OSAT. My income is OSAP, a government-funded loan, in order to sustain my children, myself, and my education. I am an Aboriginal descendant and I was denied for native funding for my education. My budget, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars a month to live off of from OSAP without any other supports. On September fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, due to no fault of my own, I was given an eviction order so that my landlord could move his own family in. My unit has not been maintained properly by professionals. It is in complete disrepair. Even with having a tenant lawyer and city enforcement, I have gone without heat for two winters. I am currently living on space heaters to keep my family warm. On November fifteenth, I had a tenant court hearing date. Thankfully, I received advice in order to have it adjourned to receive representation through the Hamilton Community Legal Clinic. This has allowed me more time in my unit to not become homeless or in a shelter with my own two children during the winter and holiday season. I received homeless status through the access to housing in Hamilton, Ontario. And just when I thought I had a chance of being able to have benefits of first and last month's rent, it was cut from the, it was cut. The housing stability helps many families. I was left not knowing if I could possibly be able to afford the emergency housing situation of first and last month's rent, deposit, moving expenses, hydro transfer fees, the income of an incoming bill, bare minimum. Let's not talk about all the extras. Not having the, the housing stability benefits puts myself, not only myself, but many Hamilton citizens at serious risk of being homeless. I see it in the community. I work with it as I am involved in early childhood education at Mohawk College. I'm an advocate throughout my city. There's gonna be families without hydro, without a comfortable bed to sleep on. Do you know what that feeling and fear is like? Where do we go? What do we qualify for? As low-income citizens with emergency housing situations, be under our control. The housing stability benefit needs to be stabilized.
Thank you very much Natasha. Are there any questions or comments from around the committee? Councillor Farr.
Natasha, I would only ask that you forward me your address quietly before you leave and we'll see about the heat situation. Thank you. I'm not sure if you're a downtown resident, but I'll make sure I look into that. Thanks.
Thank you.
With the heat situation?
It's off for two years and you're currently living with space heaters?
I currently live with space heaters, but.
You don't have to give your address publicly?
No, I won't.
Forward me that, I'll, I'll look into that for you.
There's, um, it's been looked into, but, you know, you need new electrical in order to put in base heaters. Landlords don't want to pay for the cost of electrical. I'm a, I'm a fire hazard just for base heaters.
Real quickly through you to achieve, I don't think we can allow, I don't think it's against the bylaw to have space heaters as your,
No, it is.
primary form of heat. Is that true through you, Chair?
I had to pursue Union Gas. My unit had gas leaks in it. I was shut down. I had four gas leaks. I lived in my unit for four months before I found out that I had four gas leaks and was shut down and have consistently been shut down by Union Gas. Fixed, shut down again. The most recent one was October two thousand and fifteen. I had the entire building shut down. I was apologized to by the Union Gas boss as there was ten gas leaks within my building, ranging from the basement through my bathroom, into my unit, the apartment above me. The system was completely shot and fixed. I went until February two thousand and fifteen with heat. The hundred-year-old gas system shut down again and was not fixed. I advised my landlord alone in September that I still had no heat. That's when I received an eviction notice. I'm lucky, very lucky enough to have had the support of my doctor and the Hamilton Community Legal Clinic to pursue finding housing for January, yet I have not signed papers. Do I have a residence to go to in January? I hope so. I know so, but I have not signed papers. But I also have to replace all my items due to adjacent buildings that are not enforced to properly maintain an epidemic of bedbugs. I maintain my unit. I do caulking. I do taping. I work deed on my feet when I walk in my streets. I don't know how I'm physically gonna afford without the benefit to replace my brand-new items that I bought when I was capable of working.
Thank you.
That was a very powerful and passionate presentation. Good luck in school and, uh, keep on.
I had an exam today.
Early childhood, I too.
I hope, I hope good.
I'm sure you did very well. Thank you very much. I'll move to receive the delegate.
Thank you.
Moved to receive by councillor Farr, seconded by councillor Partridge, all those in favor, carried. We have Ms. Sarah Gemma, respecting the HSB.
Is this fine? Can everyone hear me?
Just move it down just a little bit, Sarah. Yeah, there you go. That's perfect.
Is that good?
That's perfect.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Sarah Gemma. Um, I'm here representing the New Generation Youth Centre, um, which sees around three thousand youth a year. I'm also the Ontario Director for the National Educational Association of Disabled Students. I've recently been nominated for the Young Woman of Distinction Award of Hamilton. I served on my student council work, which represented twenty-two thousand undergraduate, uh, students of the Social Science Caucus later for two years. I was the first student, uh, with a disability to run and come second place, um, in a student council election for president. I sat on over three committees on my campus and I sit on a variety of committees in the city. But a lot of times I find that people like to applaud my successes, but people, people get really uncomfortable when I talk about where I've come from. I remember being in grade eleven, um, fleeing from a situation of domestic violence with my mom. We had to, when we were moving back to Ontario, we had to live in a women's shelter. And it was actually the housing stability benefit that helped us get back on our feet. It was me, my brother, and my nephew and my mom, uh, rented a place near our high school so I could finish, uh, my degree or my diploma and move on to post-secondary. But at that time with the housing stability benefit, even though we could afford first and last, we were sleeping on a mattress in an empty apartment. If you want to invest in the future leadership in Hamilton, we have to start acknowledging that these benefits aren't enough. And so the fact that we're here debating whether or not there's enough money to begin with, I understand that you guys are in a rough position, right? You're saying that there's not enough money in your funds to support the housing stability benefit, that it ran out. But you are city councillors. It's your job to figure it out. It's not our job to stand here and tell you how much this hurts us. It's not my job to tell you when I'm struggling to get out of poverty that I'm afraid that these conversations are coming up, that we have to stand here and say, this is why it shouldn't be cut or this is why it should be restored. I understand that you're in a tough position because the province is supposed to be doing this and that. You guys are supposed to be our fighters. It's not supposed to be me standing here or her standing here retelling our stories to convince you to fight harder. We need you to do more. This isn't enough. There's an epidemic of poverty in Hamilton with gentrification. Last week or two weeks ago, it was a bunch of youth got together in the Hamilton Public Library to talk about how gentrification was hurting us at an anti-racism action initiative. Not enough is being done. Twenty-nine percent of youth who are facing homelessness are expecting a child. Forty-two percent of newcomers in Hamilton are living below the poverty line. And this was reported by the National Housing Survey. I don't want to come here and hear the question, well, what can we do? I need you guys to figure this out. My mom and I, like, we've come a long, a long way. We're both getting our, uh, undergraduate degree in April. Like, she's finishing school and as am I. But I'm also petrified that when I graduate, I'm not gonna have a place to live. We need you guys to fight for this. We need you guys to figure it out. Capitalists are very good at finding funding where there shouldn't be any. Do more research. I was gonna say more, but I'm, I'm just, I'm really, I'm, I'm floored at the fact that we're having this conversation today to begin with. And I don't want to hear the response of, we don't know where the money is. Figure it out, please. Because it's not gonna be us who's going to figure it out. You guys are making, uh, six-figure salaries. You can invest in the time to figure out where the money will go or where you're gonna pull it from. It's, we shouldn't have to have rallies by the Hamilton Community Legal Clinic to stand outside and say, this is enough and that we're struggling. People die with these decisions. Like, lives are being hurt. My brother is hopping. He got diagnosed with paranoid schizophrenia two years ago and he's shelter hopping. Um, and without benefits like this, he wouldn't be able to find adequate housing. There are so many flaws in our system and we have to start addressing why that is. The systemic barriers that exist that prevent people like me from getting out of poverty. Yes, I'm doing a lot, but don't mistake that. I'm also struggling. And for me to be standing up here, for people to be standing up here and reliving their stories so that you guys can get the bigger picture, it's just ridiculous. And I also ask that the next time somebody comes up to speak, I ask all of you to make eye contact. Because this is life experience. I'm not standing here for the sake of it. Thank you.
Sarah, Sarah, if you could just, just in the event that there are any questions or comments from around, if I could for a moment, I'm gonna pass the chair over to councillor Johnson. I just wanted to acknowledge the work that you're doing in the community and your leadership has been absolutely incredible. Having attended your, your previous rallies, um, yeah, it's, it's amazing what, what is happening now in our community in terms of organizing and it is present here today. And I do want to just take a moment and acknowledge everybody who took time out of their days to be here. You're right. You're absolutely right. It's ridiculous that we have to be back at this table. I do want to acknowledge councillor Marula and staff for, in the, in the interim from when this last report came up. Because staff, they're directed, when they, when the budget runs out, it runs out. They can't spend more money without it coming to, to this committee. So they did what they had to do. Councillor Marula and this committee will do what we have to do here shortly. Uh, but you will find, I believe in this motion, a very fulsome response to some of the challenges that you brought up. I just wanted to acknowledge both you and, and everybody who took time to be here today. Um, I certainly appreciate it. Don't stop organizing and, and don't let up because this, unfortunately, my feeling is that things are actually gonna get worse before they get better. And so that's why it's so important to continue to organize and continue to put pressure on in every opportunity to tell your story and, and, and not in a way that objectifies you, but in a way that is assertive and firm like you've done here today. Uh, because, you know, there is a broader public that needs to understand the effects of, of neoliberalism and the effects of, of the decisions that are being made at the federal and provincial levels. Because the municipality, you know, as you've seen through our, through our programming, uh, we, we are and will continue to do everything we can within our means to support Hamiltonians. So with that, I just, I just wanted to commend you for being here today and, and thank you and certainly look forward to your future leadership. Councillor Johnson, I'll take the chair back. We have on the speakers list, uh, councillor Partridge and then councillor Marula.
Yes, thank you very much, um, uh, Mr. Chair. And, and Sarah, thank you so much for coming in. And you, and you're right, of course. You're all right. Um, all of us need to do more. But please don't stop coming in to talk to us. It is so very important. Your voices must be heard and this is your public forum. So I wanna, I wanna thank you for everything that you're doing, but please, keep it up, keep strong, and never stop pushing us all forward, okay? Thank you.
We have councillor Marula.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Sarah. Uh, just, um, for clarity purposes, on, on Friday at our budget meeting, um, in all fairness to council, they did support a motion to, uh, look at hydro dividends to, uh, supplement this particular program in a interim basis until we dealt with the problem. So we have, we have been working on, on a plan, started on Friday. We received unanimous support, uh, to allow staffs to assess that. And today, um, we've gone even further as a result of the work of staff as well to deal with this issue with the motion that will be presented. Um, so just so, not to be remiss, that we, we are, we have been taking action since we were alerted of the depletion of the fund. And, and no one has taken a slightly, and as a result, um, the, the motions, discussions, and all the work is a true testament of that. So I just needed to say.
Thank you.
Thank you for your efforts.
Councillor Whitehead.
You, just a dovetail on, on those comments. I don't think it's any secret that the property tax base isn't the proper, uh, prob-, um, it's a static property. It's not a progressive system and impacts people unfortunately, um, more significantly when you raise taxes based on the fact that people are living and barely hanging on to their homes. So if that's the only source of revenue, then we're pushing more people into poverty. So it is a much more complex issue. And that's why, um, uh, and I think councillor Marula's been very vocal on this and I've been very supportive of his position, uh, that the income tax is a more progressive, uh, approach to dealing with these challenges and generating the revenue. Uh, the property tax base is not. And, uh, far too often, um, the province downloads those issues onto the city that has, uh, the lack of a progressive tax process to address those significant systemic issues. So the line of questions I asked earlier, uh, were consistent with that. Uh, that we need to keep the pressure on the province. Um, but I don't think I recall sitting here in fourteen years I've been here, uh, whether it was home care, where we didn't have enough funding and who led the charge. We supplemented one-stop, uh, uh, funding to ensure that program would continue. Even though the province abandoned it. Now, they came back a couple of years later. So this council has led, has led on issues that shouldn't be on our plate. Because we don't want to leave people behind. We have a, a history of doing that. And I'm, and I wouldn't be surprised if we don't do that today. So I just wanted to give you comfort knowing that, uh, that these are significant challenges. We don't take them for granted. But we need to also understand that the property tax base is not the appropriate, uh, tax base to be dealing with these very strong systemic issues that impact, uh, so many people. And we need to use the tax, uh, the, the, uh, income tax system, which both the federal and provincial government has control over, to ensure that appropriate dollars are being funneled into the communities to address these very significant issues. Hamilton contributes two point eight billion dollars and only gets eight cents on the dollar in return on tax dollars back to this community. Think about that for a moment.
People.
If I could just quickly, I, I'm gonna pass the chair back to councillor Johnson because there is a very important point in what has just been said. And it's important because the, the Tenant Solidarity Network is here and I know that they've done work on this. The fact remains that renters pay two times per square foot for property tax versus homeowners. So you often hear this false dichotomy of homeowner, taxpayer, car driver, it's kind of all wrapped up into one and then everybody else. But the reality is, to councillor Whitehead's point, that when we shift onto the, onto the property tax burden, those that are hit the most are actually those that are most vulnerable. So that's a very important distinction. And he also brought up, um, income tax. And I would argue in a very direct way that it's the corporate tax cuts that have, uh, had to create this, this massive, massive, uh, crisis that we're experiencing here in the community. So with that, we do have a motion that is coming up, but first we'll move to receive, sorry, I'll take the chair back. We'll move to receive, uh, Sarah, and, uh, thank all the delegates for being here. And then I'm gonna ask the chair to take the prerogative to move councillor Marula's motion up to this, uh, to this delegation. So, uh, moved by councillor Farr, seconded by councillor Jackson, all those in favor. Carried, thank you so much, Sarah.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to ask councillor Sam Marula to bring his motion.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. It's moved by myself and seconded by, um, whoever would like to second it. Councillor Aiden Johnson. Uh, whereas the housing stability benefit is funded through the provincial community homelessness prevention initiative, whereas Hamilton received a nominal increase to the CHPI budget of one percent for the two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen fiscal year. for the 2017, 2018 fiscal year, which equates to approximately $190,000. Whereas this increase is insufficient to meet the overall demands of the programs funded through CHPI. Whereas the HSB is an extremely important support to the vulnerable citizens of Hamilton in maintaining housing. Whereas the HSB mitigation strategies implemented on November 28th, 2016 will cause hardships in the community. Whereas it is estimated approximately 600 people will be impacted by the HSB mitigation plan within the first three months of 2017. Whereas investment in safe and secure housing for children and families is critical to address the basic needs and offer a foundation for lifelong health, learning, and achievement to break the cycle of poverty. Whereas being behind on rent is associated with negative health outcomes, food insecurity for parents and children, energy insecurity, poor school performance, health trade-offs. Whereas increasing costs and scarcity in the local rental market has resulted in greater costs and requests for last month rent. Whereas the main drivers contributing to the pressure in HSB include utility rears, last month rent, mattresses for ODSP recipients, and rent arrears. Whereas there's limited to no other funding in the community where people can go to for help with these types of benefits. And whereas the Community and Emergency Services Department forecasting a positive variance of $945,000, whereas an additional $500,000 would allow Community and Emergency Services to continue to offer the HSB with no mitigation measures. Whereas the City of Hamilton has provided transition funding in the past to offset one-time deficit while lobbying the provincial government for additional funding. Example, one-time funding provided to the initial transition of the community startup to HSB to funding. One-time funding while ending trusteeship programs, et cetera. Therefore, be a result that the Community and Emergency Services 2016 Department forecasted positive variance be utilized to offset the cost of the HSB shortfall. And should those funds not be sufficient, that the Community and Emergency Services 2016 Department will year-end variance be funded from the Tax Stabilization Reserve. And I, did I just have a moment? Um, I, firstly, I want to thank staff for assisting in this particular initiative. Secondly, I want to thank, as I mentioned earlier, council for recognizing, um, that with those dividends that are forthcoming from hy, the, the hydro merger, that this program would become a priority to be assessed by staff. And, and thirdly, the community for their involvement in, in ensuring that they provide their input to assist us in ensuring that we're doing our job. And I really feel that our job is, many times, to, to be there when others aren't. And I know that I've been very vocal on the downloading file. And actually, somebody mentioned earlier that 25% of our operating, when you're incorporating, when you incorporate all of our boards and agencies and all of the downloading issues, it's nearly half of everything we budget for, we don't control as a direct result of the province. So I understand the issue. I'm very vocal on the issue. I wish the average person understood it better. Because if that were the case, it would become a valid issue, and it would probably change. Having said that, I'm not optimistic that people are going to understand the issue because of the complexity and how convoluted, and how convoluted the issue is, uh, for people to, to actually make it a valid issue. And the fact that higher levels of government aren't prepared to actually deal with the issue because they're able to get away with it. So when you look at the federal government and whatever surpluses they had over the years, or the reckless spending of the province, and then people start focusing in on municipalities, the, the reality is that we can't run deficits. And, and our, our credit rating is better than that of the province. But although we're probably the most fiscally sound managed level of government, everybody and their brother considers to beat us up all the time. So when you look at the history of, of, of this city, particularly in this council, since I've been on council, when the province has not been able to fulfill their obligation, whether it be home care, which I was proud to initiate about 12 years ago or 10 years ago, in, in stepping up to the plate when the province walked away, it was done so in a manner to not only shame the province and create awareness, but also allow for dialogue to be initiated with the province, to engage them in having them understand how severe of an impact that type of cut would be. And we were successful. It didn't happen as quickly as we wanted it to, but it happened. And, and, and we should be very proud of that. Most recently, there was an issue surrounding the autism program. And we were prepared at that time to come forward and step to the, step up to the plate and say, although this is another welcoming of downloading, it's the right thing to do. So there is no difference in what we're faced with here today. And when I include the, the hydro money, it just compounds how much it is to do, to do the right thing. The right thing in this situation is, the, this housing stability benefit should be funded from the dividends from, from hydro. It should be funded from that source because the same people that are being impacted, that are turning to this program, are literally paying into that program. Hence, my notion that that's exactly where the source funding should be. Is it sustainable? No. But in the meantime, it is a source of funding that's available to us that we can utilize until we allow the province to recognize how serious of an error they've made. So over and above that, because of staff's creativity, the long-term goal would be to try to tap into that fund. But in the, in the present situation, or what we have before us is an opportunity to have no impact on the general levy, but yet have a huge impact on the most marginalized in our community that can tap into this program. And for that, I want to thank staff, particularly Joanne Prile, uh, for their efforts. And I say that there, there are things that I'm, I'm, I'm very proud of. But when we do the right thing, I can't emphasize how proud I am to be able to step up to the plate, even though I understand politically that the province is manipulating us. That's irrelevant. This is about the human deficit, not the financial deficit or the political capital. This is all about doing the right thing. And in doing the right thing, you look at what we're faced with here in the city. This is only going to get worse rather than better. When I was first elected, we were, we had stagnant assessment growth. We had flooding basements. We were really the mockery of, of Ontario, the armpit of Southern Ontario, some would, we would suggest. We've come to a point where property values are escalating, now number one in the country. Our infrastructure has been greatly improved, particularly in East Hamilton, where we've had hundreds of millions of dollars in eliminating funding. We have new roads, new sidewalks. People are moving in from Toronto. We have a beautiful skirment that most Hamiltonians have forgotten we have, but Swantonians just love. We have a great waterfront. We have this renaissance that I've been speaking about, that people are finally recognizing, that is, uh, unprecedented. We have the most private and public investment in the history of, of this city. And as a result, we're creating wealth, indeed. We're creating an environment that's conducive to success. But during that process, during the celebration, during this incredible high that we're all experiencing, we are leaving people behind.
Just one second. So if you could, just, just one second, Marula. Uh, if we could just keep, um, the comments. If you want to delegate, feel free to do, do so. If, if you're just gonna speak from the, um, from the seats, I'd ask that you just keep your comments to yourself, please. Thank you. I'm sorry? I'm sorry?
He said, he said he's gonna shut up.
Oh, I thought he said he was gonna delegate. I'm, I'm, my apologies. Please, the floor is yours.
So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we, in, in the process, we are leaving, I believe, some people behind, but not advertently. And because we have three levels of government, and a lot of people forget that there are three levels of government, we need a progressive means of dealing with this particular issue. And this particular issue is not going to be solved at the municipal tax level. It's gonna be resolved, resolved in a partnership with the federal, provincial, and municipal government. So we look at, uh, how 20 years ago, we were the laughing stock of Ontario. We look at how presently everyone is celebrating our success. And we're now looking at how this is hurting people. So how do we, so we're damned if we do, we're damned if we don't. 20 years ago, people were in here as delegations saying, what the hell are you gonna do to improve this city? Now people are coming in here and saying, what the hell are you gonna do to protect me from this improvement? So this is where we need to engage and need a new deal with the province. We need a new deal with the federal government. We need a progressive means of addressing this particular issue. And it's not a simple solution, but it's a doable solution. And the only way we'll find the solution in all of this is to collectively work together to ensure, to ensure that we target the right levels of government. And we need to storm Queen's Park. We need to storm the House of Commons. Because as they're sitting back eating their caviar and drinking their champagne, we're sitting here eating tuna sandwiches and chocolate milk, being criticized for that, too. So we really need to, to focus on priorities and focus on where the attention should be and where really the money is, where the authority is. People forget, we only exist because the province allows us to. And they dictate to us what, what we can or cannot do. And over and above, we're paying their bills. It's like they're drunken sailors in a bar who leave and then leave the bill behind for us. And I'm tired of it. I've said it for nearly 20 years. It's moved a little bit for every step we've taken forward. We got to take three steps back, but we can't give up. Uh, we need the public to understand this issue and target the right level of government. But in the meantime, we have a solution here today on a short term with long term in sight. And I want to thank staff, committee members, and council for having the vision to deal with this issue, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Counselors Whitehead and Scully. Counselor Whitehead, the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you, Mr. De, uh, Mr. Chair. I, um, I've been, uh, and I, I did an article on this a while back about how proud I am of this council because I believe every interest, uh, is being reflected, uh, through, uh, the number of counselors that champion issues, whether it's, uh, issues around poverty, or, or environmental, or, or, or business, or development. Uh, it seems that, uh, there seems to be a champion for every one of those issues around this horseshoe, and that's what makes it well-balanced. I, um, I look at the, the, the history of the decision-making, uh, at this, in this chamber, and I think, I'm not gonna reiterate, but Counselor Marula is dead on that every time, uh, that the, uh, stuff started hitting the fan, uh, and, uh, people were left at risk, the people that rose to the occasion was this council. The people that actually approved one-stop funding was this council. The challenge that we have as a council, and I think we touched on it earlier, every time you increase, um, tax, like, on the property tax base, which is not a progressive tax system, you are jeopardizing the very same people you're trying to help. You're putting them at further risk, and it becomes reciprocal. And that's why when you deal with these type of issues, it makes more sense to get the funding, uh, through the, um, the income tax system. So when I look at, um, one point, or $2.2 billion being spent on a project in this community, and I'm thinking about capacity and where the priorities are, and I think about the fact that we have, on numerous occasions, the great work of the Roundtable for Poverty, we've identified very clearly, uh, some significant challenges, uh, right from the, the, the rates that social services receive, uh, to a, a number of other programs, yet we seem to have capacity to build a $2.2 billion dollar project in the City of Hamilton. At the same time, we have, uh, people in significant poverty in our community. So to me, it's a capacity issue. What concerns me is when they, um, look at, when they look at, uh, the impacts of these programs, they've set up this, 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 this shell. It's, instead of funding these individual programs, and I'm gonna ask Joanne Pril, can you just, uh, uh, identify the current programs being funded through the chippy funding?
Uh, through you, uh, Mr. Chair. They would include all the funding for all of our emergency shelters, for the residential care facilities, for the money that we provide to the, uh, food banks, um, housing stability benefit, um, and all of the work that we do around housing first, which is helping people move from shelters to permanent housing.
So you have these, uh, very significant, profound programs that, uh, deal with and facilitate and provide some dignity and, and, and shelter and, uh, and access to individuals in need. Instead of funding those individual programs, they come up with this great idea. The great idea was, look, uh, City of Hamilton and cities across the province of Ontario, we're not gonna do, uh, do chippy that way anymore. We're gonna provide a bulk bound of money so you can choose where those priorities are. But what they didn't tell you is that they didn't provide the appropriate funding for each of those programs. What they did is create this, this, this shell game where they limit and cap the funding on programs that have growing needs and are not being met. And then they have the nerve, and this is what kills me when I read this article, the nerve to point the finger at the City of Hamilton when it comes to the stabilization program and said, you decided on the priority. The city, that's your problem, not ours. The nerve. So what did they want us to do? Pull money out of the shelter program? Out of, out of the, uh, residential care facility program? Where do they want us to pull the money out of? They're not providing adequate funding for these programs. How in the hell do they expect us to meet the needs of our community? So it really baffles me. Baffles me that every, so often, we find ourselves in the situation where they point the finger at the municipality, and then we are here dealing with the heartfelt stories of how it impacts people in their everyday lives significantly. We're the ones that hear it while they're insulated at the Pink Palace, dictating to us how much funds we're gonna get on every year. I'm tired of it. It's almost like it wears on you because you're tired of hearing, and then these are legitimate concerns for people that are impacted every day from the lack of funding, a lack of shelter, a lack of heating, a lack of existence, and have to make critical choices. And yet we're the ones on the front lines that hear it over and over again, but nothing changes. And the pressure's always on us to fill the gap. That relationship has to change. And we need the, the help of the very community that's making the presentation before us. And we need to find a vehicle so they, they can hear these stories personally and understand the profound impacts they're having on communities, not like, just, not just Hamilton, but across this province. So there's no question I'm gonna be supporting the motion before us. We have an alternative. We are the last breath of hope for these individuals to have these, access to these funds, to meet their needs. And there's many questions I've sent to, uh, uh, Joanne Pril earlier this, this morning, uh, questions that need to be answered. This program shouldn't exist. It shouldn't exist. The reason it exists is because the province isn't funding welfare and, and, and disability appropriately. So those are my comments, Mr. Chair. I want to thank those that came forward with their, 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 their very sincere, heart-wrenching stories and the impacts it has on them. I have no question that I'm gonna be supporting what's before us. Uh, but doesn't mean I'm gonna give up the fight to ensure the appropriate, uh, uh, govern, governments are funding these programs at a, uh, sufficient level that we don't have to continue being the stopgap, uh, year in and year out. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Whitehead. I certainly hear your passion and appreciate the points you've raised. Counselor Scully.
Thank you through the chair. I support the motion. I do have one, um, suggestion, however, for a friendly amendment, if Counselor Marula would consider it. My concern is that, uh, the part two of the, uh, motion, uh, that the year-end variance be funded if funds are not sufficient from the Tax Stabilization Reserve, which is already at historical lows, that perhaps we could, um, change that to funded from the mayor's, um, uh, fund to address, uh, poverty issues moving forward. Now, this is only if there aren't enough funds to address, um, the forecasted positive variance. So with, and, and Mr. Marula did, uh, Counselor Marula did suggest that he would like to see some of the funds, these funds to come from hydro, the cellular hydro.
I, I do believe, sure. I do believe that we just did that, though, at the budget. So this is kind of a concurrent motion, but if you'd like, if you're asking to remove the Tax Stabilization Reserve, um...
The, the second portion of it.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with that because I think it's already been assessed. But if you have, Joanne, just elaborate on that, that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if you could have an "or" in there, and, because I'm not sure, the dividend money... not sure, the dividend money that you spoke about last week is not going to flow until maybe April. Um, so that would be a problem. The mayor's money in terms of the hydro trust fund, that's not yet been approved from, by council, and I'm afraid that that's going to take some, that might not be before you until March either.
That's, that's fair.
You could add an or in there, or because I checked this, uh, motion out with Mike Zagarik and that's what he suggested, the tax stabilization reserve.
Sounds fair.
Or you could add the or, or the mayor's poverty reduction, uh, strategy fund.
Yeah, perfect. So we have the friendly amendment. I don't think we need to motion it. We're just changing and to or. Thank you for, for raising that. That's already happening. And I'm confident that with the voices around this table, when that comes, we'll prioritize this as the number one need. I know Counselor Jackson brought this up at our last budget meeting, talking about it going, the rebate's going right back to the hardest hit, the vulnerable people there. So I think that we have two, uh, two irons in the fire, so to speak. So we have the motion that is before us, moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Johnson. I would like to ask on behalf of my main man Chewie, that we do a standard recorded vote. All those in favor? Let the record show that it's unanimous. Carrie, thank you very much.